All right, everyone, we'd like to get the meeting started. Thank everyone for attending tonight. The hour of six o'clock having come and gone, we'd like to start the Calumet City So with that said, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete. Wilson. Tillman.
Here.
Williams. Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We passed a remote ordinance which allows remote participation. At this time, we have a request from Alderman Ramon Williams from the 4th Ward to participate via this meeting via remote. As customary, we need to have a motion and a second, state the reason for participation. So at this time, is there a motion to allow Alderman Ramon Williams to participate in this meeting via remote?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Patton. For the record, we will take a roll call vote, and then Alderman Williams will state his reason. Can he state the reason prior to the vote? Alderman Williams, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, requesting permission to participate remotely for I am under doctor's care at this time, and I cannot be out in the world.
Roll call, please.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
F. T.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to call up Pastor Vuker to say a word of prayer.
Good evening to Mr. Mayor, city officials, city council. Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we thank you that you've allowed us to come together again to share not only our faith, but to share the fellowship of this city and our communities. Now, Father, we pray that you look on our city official who is under the weather, who is sick, touch his body from the crown of his head to the sole of his feet, and look on this meeting that in all of our getting, we get an understanding. We bless your name and we honor you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, all right. Tonight, is there a motion to DVA from the Red Order Business for presentations and also for the sub-area plan? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Gardner. At this time, we'd like to call up Val Williams. We're going to go through the youth wards, and then we're also going to go through the Black History Ward and then the sub-area plan.
Okay, I'm going to refer to Christina. She's going to handle this tonight, Mayor, so she will give an overview.
Hello, everyone. So we're here today to showcase some of our winners of our Black History Month Student Contest. These students were ranging from seven to seventeen, and so we had a large group of students participate, and these are some of our winners, so we'll be awarding their awards today. And so I'll give it over to the mayor to handle the awards.
All right, I will ask the city council to join me as we present the wards, join me up front as we take pictures with the winners. We will announce their names, give the prize, and then we will do the announcement, but if city council can join me up front.
We're going to start with category one winners. This is DeAngelo, he comes from Lakeview, age nine, first place. Last year, it was drawn near, next year it will be drawn. I think all everyone from last year that drew was my big year and drew everything. This year, category was drawn first lady, there was a picture to go up on us to draw the picture. All I could not do here tonight, she did for me last year when I was a little injured. Tonight, I present these all over here. So category one and category two winners represent the drawings that they were before. So DeAngelo came in first, age nine.
He's here?
He is.
No, he's not here, we'll get him soon.
And that will be where we are, second place, age nine. The second category is Alyssa Morgan, first place, grade eleven. And our category three winners, first place, Xavier Bell. Alana Fraser Clark, our second.
That's my baby sister! That's my friend!
Now, we will go to our Black History Month Contest and Awards.
Essays.
Essays.
Essays. That was the last one.
Do you want to talk about the display that we have presenting in front of us?
Well, might be us, we have this, Sheena Dixon.
The display just represents for Black History Month, we wanted to honor and topple out the essays that the students presented. So each one is just a symbol or a picture of the person that they wrote about to show how they changed history in the past and in the present. So one, we had the boxer, we had the man that made the microphone, and then we had a lady that was a neurospecialist who was a scientist. So this is what she made, and we just wanted to give you guys an idea, so it's not just about writing the essays and the hard work, it was in the way that we see it.
Let's give it up again for our winner. If all the winners can come up and take a group picture, please, if you have some numbers.
I'm sorry.
This is Mary, one more.
For the record, we have Alderman Navarrete joining the meeting at six nineteen PM. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, we do have Alderman Williams joining us remotely. So at this time, we're going to start the meeting, and we'll allow time for you guys if you want to stay for the meeting. You don't have to, but we'll allow it time for everyone to stay or leave if you want So at this time, we'd like to, we have a CMAP presentation, which for Alderman Navarrete, Alderman Gardner, we know that this is important for the 1st Ward and the 5th Ward. So at this time, we'd like to have invite CMAP up to present the sub-area area plan for the 1st Ward and the 5th Ward.
Hello, good evening, everyone, Mayor Jones, city council members. My name's Kelsey Pedlock, and I'm a senior planner with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, and I'm also here today with my colleague, Jack Chan, he's a civil engineer with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here and setting aside some time in this meeting today to learn about the Calumet City Subarea Plan. So this is a result of a collaborative effort between the city, MWRD, CMAP, to develop a plan for a small geographic area on the eastern side of the city, and it spans both the 1st and 5th wards. The project started in the spring of 2022, and after nearly two years of working with the city, we now have a draft plan and are seeking public input and feedback on it this next week. So on next Monday, we will be offering the community an opportunity to come and see the plan, review it, and provide input at a joint town hall that the 1st and 5th Ward will be hosting. So in preparation of that event, we just wanted to make sure that all council members are aware of the project and its progress, and have the necessary information to pass it on to your residents and businesses that live within your wards, and if there's any interest in providing that feedback, to encourage them to attend and participate in this planning process. So, next slide, please. Oh, there we go. So to provide some background on the project and why MWRD and CMAP in particular are here, this particular plan was developed through CMAP's Technical Assistance Program and our partnership with MWRD. So the technical assistance piece, we provide planning and implementation assistance, we leverage our region's transportation network, as well as help build local capacity, and then our partnership with MWRD allows us to bring in local stormwater planning assistance. And so together, we really provide a more comprehensive package of planning services when working with communities like Calumet City. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we came together to develop a sub-area plan, and this area is on the screen, the small square in purple. So to just put it into context, when we say sub-area, we just mean a limited geography within the city's limits. And so, next slide. Just to zoom in on this area a little bit further, it's about a square mile with 156 Place in the south, Burnham Avenue to the west, excuse me, Memorial Drive to the north, and State Line Road to the east. So anything within that square and along those corridors fall within the sub-area plan. So focusing in on this area in particular, the plan sets forth a shared vision and identifies multi-objective opportunities through the lens of both community and economic development, transportation and safety, and flooding and stormwater management. So the, next slide, please, oh, great. So the plan is really building on existing efforts that the city has already delved into, and input from the community, the plan's really building on and being guided by the three goals here on the screen. So the first one is to enhance the transportation network in terms of both the infrastructure and routes, increasing people's ability to move around the sub-area and the surrounding city safely. The second one is to attract and retain existing businesses along commercial corridors like Pulaski, Burnham Avenue, Wentworth Avenue, and to improve local flooding and stormwater management throughout the area. Next slide. All right, so how did we get here? I mentioned it was a two-year process, and the process itself really is intended to capture what the community's priorities are and the vision for the future, so engaging with people who live, work, and just move throughout the study area itself plays a really critical role in the planning process. So within that two-year span, the project engaged with city staff, residents, a youth group, and various business owners to learn about existing conditions, how the community sees and interacts with the study area, and then opportunities that this plan in particular can address. So in that time, what we heard through the various conversations and engagements we had, we learned that the community would like to see city-owned lots be developed in various ways, whether it be new businesses, more housing options, park space, and a greater variety of restaurants and grocery stores, in particular when it comes to new businesses. They'd also like to see incentives for helping businesses improve their storefronts, transportation improvements that reduce speeding, and just greater awareness of the interventions and programs out there to keep homes from flooding, as well as to more proactively manage stormwater with green infrastructure and more streamlined maintenance. So I know these are things that the city is currently tackling, and it's just reemphasizing the importance of the work that you're doing and a plan that can help move those steps forward. So with those key priorities in mind and the focus areas of the plan, the plan itself is broken out into those three areas of community and economic development, transportation and safety, and stormwater management and flooding. And then within each of those sections, there's guidance on municipal planning and decision-making, policy direction on relevant topics, including land use, and then a handful of implementation steps and funding sources to help achieve the policy directions that we're providing. So I'm going to just briefly, very briefly, walk through each of the sections. More details if you come to the town hall on Monday, but the community and economic development section's really tied to and identifies opportunities for the city to give access to diverse and affordable shopping and housing options, and attract new development, whether it be through updating zoning and development standards along commercial corridors, as well as supporting existing businesses with assistance with marketing, networking opportunities, and incentives for beautifying storefronts. So transportation and safety, this section provides recommendations on strategies to make streets safer and more inviting through investments in complete streets practices and really integrating those best practices into road improvement projects that the city is already working on right now. And then with that concept of complete streets, really looking at the street holistically, this goes into supporting infrastructure and amenities that slow traffic down, increase the bicycle network and infrastructure, and revamping some of the key bus routes that go through the study area, and then just ultimately looking at how to make the streets network and walkability more safe and accessible for everyone. And then stormwater management and flooding, this is really focused on trying to help the city take a more comprehensive approach to flooding and stormwater management within the sub-area particularly. So it recommends that the city take on a stormwater storage, set a stormwater storage goal to incrementally set and understand what the city's level of service is, and in other words, that's understanding the amount of rain that the city's sewer system can handle, and then by setting those goals, it really functions as a tool for the city to help prioritize more cost-effective projects. So it goes further to identify a handful of site-specific green infrastructure and stormwater improvement projects that help build that storage, as well as policy and programmatic actions that will ultimately just make the community more resilient in the face of flooding and other types of climate-related disasters. So with that, I just want to say that, again, we were really looking forward to being back here on Monday. We welcome everyone to come out and provide input on the plan. We will have pizza and refreshments, and the town hall will be at the Jesus Shepherd of Souls Parish Gymnasium, and we'll be there starting at six, and we'll really just hang out until everyone is ready to go home. So looking forward to that, and thank you again for your time, and I'll let you all go, thanks.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm sure Alderman Navarrete and Gardner, if you have words, if you want to use it in your report, just thank CMAP for not only working with the city of Calumet City, but with Alderman Navarrete, Alderman Gardner on this important plan. Do any Aldermen have any questions? If not want to, before we go on, mention, yesterday was the 75th birthday of Winetta Thomas, so she's here tonight, so let's give her, stand up, Winetta, and... Thank you for always coming to the council meeting, thank you, and a happy birthday. Hopefully, you enjoyed yourself, and thank you for spending the night with us. We promise to get you out by eight o'clock. Tonight, we, the fire department, we got a couple honors from the fire department. We will honor our deputy fire chief at our next city council meeting, but he got a letter and appointment from, which I would like to read briefly, from Governor Pritzker, appointing and completing the executive fire officer program. So from Governor Pritzker, as the governor of the state of Illinois, I would like to congratulate you on your recent completion of the executive fire officer program with the Federal Emergency Agency, U.S. Fire Administration, National Fire Academy. Completing the EFO program is impressive accomplishment, it requires motivation, dedication, hard work, and most importantly, a willingness to challenge yourself and better your community. Your work ethic exemplifies the dedication to the service of the citizens of the state of Illinois that we deserve and expect. You and your family should be immediately proud. Once again, congratulations on completing the EFO program. I'm thrilled to see the impact you and the rest of your class will have on the state. I know you have a bright future ahead. Let's give a round of applause to our deputy fire chief on the honor from the governor, Pete Pindinelli. And we do have, and we'll put it into record at our next meeting, a letter from Congresswoman Kelly to our deputy fire chief as well. Tonight, we did promote, we had promotions, the firefighters are still here, we had Aaron Borowski promoted to captain, we have Mike Wireneck appointed to lieutenant, you know I'll butcher that name, sorry, Mike.
Close enough.
Close enough.
Get it right on the check.
Scott Hinko appointed to engineer, and we also had Marissa Peterson and Connor Sheen appointed to probationary firefighter. They're in the back right now, so let's give them a round of applause. Chief, did you have anything to, you wanted to add, deputy chief?
Good evening, Mayor Jones, city council, how are you? I apologize, this award was supposed to happen at five o'clock, but I may have, I learned this after 25 years of marriage, I may have told the firefighter to come at 5:30, so I'll take the blame on it. But briefly, I'd like to call up firefighter Craig Kozabowski. On May 30th, 2023, Craig, along with his fellow members at the Calumet City Fire Department, were called for a 45-year-old female in full cardiac arrest. The crew arrived on the scene and performed advanced life support care, and the patient was revived after 30 minutes of infield care, eight cardiac shocks, and eight rounds of medication. This persistence prevailed, and the patient had a positive outcome. I'd like to note that this award was given to Craig and his fellow firefighters by Zoll. It's a program that they have where I can send them field data of the use of their products, and they in turn give, they review the call, and they warrant an award. So tonight, I'd like to provide Craig Kozabowski of the Calumet City Fire Department, you are continually set an example of excellence through courage, loyalty, and loyalty and passion for what you do. And this is from Zoll. Thank you. And this is from ZOOL. Mayor and City Council, I'd also like to take this moment to mention that this cardiac equipment, it's very important to the men and women of the Calumet City Fire Department. I'd like to thank you for always giving Chief Bakker and I the ability to provide your firefighter and paramedics with the best equipment available. I'll tell you what, without that equipment, there's no way we would have been able to work on a patient in the field for over 30 minutes. So I appreciate your continued support in the past and into the future.
Thank you, chief. Let's give him another round of applause. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business? Motion to, motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Tillman, to return to the regular order of business at 6:38 PM. We are back in the regular order of business. We are at the item four, which is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda tonight? If so, please step to the mic.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Jones and community. My name is Rosie Leffwich. I'm here with some of my colleagues, Dan Lee and Veronica Riddle. I have to read this to you because I don't want to miss anything. Is that okay? The Advisory Committee to the People's Trustee of Dalton, Jason House, Kiana Belcher, Brittany Norwood, and Tammy Brown. Our committee consists of residents of Dalton who are planning a rally for the township, which includes 17...
I recommend some content to watch to do a voice search. Hold down the mic button while speaking.
Is that me?
No, that's, that's not you, that's...
Okay.
That's, that's the importance of technology, so you can just, you can continue on.
Okay. Our committee consists of residents of Dalton who are planning a rally, which includes your municipality. There are 17 municipalities in this area. We know that there is strength in numbers, so once we have a date, time, and location ready, we hope to have a rally sometime in April. We are hoping that you will join us in taking our township back. And thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, mayor and community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to? Yes, you can step forward, please.
First of all, we'd like to thank you for your indulgence, City Council and citizens of Cayman City. I just wanted to elaborate just a little bit more on what Ms. Leffwich spoke on. Dalton Township has been in the news, as has our city Dalton, for all the wrong reasons, and this is the primary focus of our rally. If there's anyone that would like to join us at this rally, you can leave a name, a name with myself or either of my two colleagues, Veronica Riddle or Rosie Leffwich, and we will email you when all the details of the rally have been finalized. We don't like the image that's being projected to the world about our region of this state. It's been embarrassing, and we've had enough of it, and hopefully some of you have too. So if you'd like to join us, please come over and let us get your email, and we will contact you, and hopefully you will spread the word to some of your fellow citizens. Again, I thank you all for allowing us to straighten out the agenda.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor. Ms. Nelson, 1300 block of Imperial Avenue. I spoke about this once before, the issue that's on 163rd and Superior, where they run past the stop sign, and it's a blind spot because all of these vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. Last week, my daughter and I were coming around that curb, and this guy ran the stop sign. He almost hit us head-on, and he hadn't swerved. And then he just going to stand there, sit there and look at me like I'm in the wrong. But something needs to be done about that. I went over there and 1391 Superior, and I knocked on, I rang their bell. They came to the door, but they wouldn't open the door to see, you know, what I had to say. So this is my second time addressing this, and this time it was my daughter and I in the car. So maybe we can get a sign up there, because what happens is that they'll come, and these guys that work on the lawns, they'll park their trucks and their vehicles there and get in the truck with the other person or either the other two vehicles, and they leave all that, all their cars there, where it's a blind spot, and you can't see. And then when the school lets out, those people with their kids are trying to get around also. And that's, it's going to be a really bad accident one day, and I would hate to see that.
Thank you. We have our chief in the back, Alderman Patton. Is this your ward? Seventh ward. Alderman Smith is the Alderman of the ward, so please make sure you get with the Alderman. Chief, if you can get our information, so we can make sure we take care of this right Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address public forum? If not, item five on the agenda is approval of minutes. You have the minutes before you. Are there any questions regarding the minutes as presented? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented on the city council meeting?
Some move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Item six is reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner?
No reports tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
Nothing. I just want to congratulate all of the, thank you, news there for a moment. Didn't recognize the divas direct, couldn't be in attendance, but I know you all do a long good job for, for the city, actually, in the back. Thank you all, and continue to great members, just provide our residence.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton? Thank you. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick thing, under New Business Ordinances and Resolutions, item number three, there is a, an ordinance establishing an email usage policy. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee hasn't had a chance to give a recommendation on this item yet, so we will be asking to table it to the next meeting, and certainly if any Aldermen have any questions, we can still discuss it tonight, and that is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and licenses, Alderman Smith?
No reports.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say that there was news that our Public Works Commissioner, Jericho Thomas, was, had an accident, and that involved surgery. I'm hearing that he's, he's doing well, so I just want to wish him the best, hope he gets well soon and back, back with us. And just wanted to announce, too, that I'll make sure that the deputy commissioners can cover this, but we were hoping to have a Public Works Committee meeting next week, Wednesday or Thursday. I know the deputy committee has confirmed that that would work, and the commissioner, I'll circle up with the committee members and see which day works best, maybe piggyback off Ordinances and Resolutions Committee if necessary. So look out for that next week. And two items on the agenda that I would like to have at the Public Works Committee next week would be financial items 27 and 28 on today's agenda for roll-offs at Public Works that were taken, that were funded through our TIF for projects in that area, so we'll just revisit that project as it wraps up and what those next steps might be. And that's all I have this evening, so look out for that Public Works Committee meeting agenda posted for next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight on the, I'm sorry, City Council reports. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback off CMAP's presentation, I would like to encourage our residents to attend the town hall for the first and fifth ward, where we will present the plan. Again, as you've heard, this is two years in the making with recommendations. CMAP did a wonderful job of prioritizing some of the plans that we've, we've done in the past and kind of prioritizing the recommendations from those plans and adding to it. So just for example, some of the quick items that we're going to be looking to check off are going to be making sure that the pace bus routes, they've noticed that there's some missing signage and shelters, so we'll work with pace to get those addressed. You know, making sure that our markings on the street are done properly so that we can have safe crossings, some easy ones to check off. But please, please come. Again, that's going to be March 18th, this coming Monday, at Jesus Shepherd of Souls Parish. That's the St. Andrew Church site and the gymnasium there, 768 Lincoln Avenue. Again, Monday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the St. Andrews Church Gymnasium. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman. City Council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I want to remind the residents that the next town hall meeting for the third and fourth ward is April 1st, first Monday of the month. That's at 6:30 at Downey Park Fieldhouse. Again, 6:30 Downey Park Fieldhouse, April 1st. Also, I want to give a Park Harbor update. As a reminder, over the past two years, the city worked aggressively to help relocate residents so that the community could be demolished. That has been done, and now the next steps, the community, I'm sorry, the mayor alone with my office and Economic Development have been having some very productive meetings with certain developers, and as we get more information on that, I'll continue to give that information to the residents, as I know that that's a project that they often ask me about. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to let the residents know that they, they or anyone that they know, maybe for, I put, my office has some information regarding pace, transportation that is close to hiring, so if you would like more information, please contact the office at 708-891-8194 or 708-212-2240. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to remind the fifth ward residents that the flyers for Monday's town hall meeting has gone out. You should have received the flyer in the mail. Need more information about this event, please scan the QR code on the rear side of the flyer. If you have any other questions, concerns, please continue to call my office, 708-891-8195. Look forward to seeing you all on the 18th. I saw that, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth Ward, Alderman, Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, March 30th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., we will be doing a confidential document shredding event in the parking lot of Our Lady of Knock Church. And then at 11:00 a.m., the Easter Bunny will show up in advance of our 12:00 p.m. sharp Easter egg hunt. So everybody's welcome to attend both events. Come out, have fun, get your picture taken with the Easter Bunny. We will be giving away some Easter baskets as door prizes, and we'll have some other fun stuff mixed in with the candy for the Easter egg hunt as well. Other than that, today was the deadline for us to submit our sidewalk request lists for this coming year, for this coming project year. If you have reached out to me at any time in the past six years, six and a half years, and your sidewalk still has not been done, it has been put on this year's list, because I think I finally got the list whittled down enough that we should be able to take care of my allotment of requests this year and get us all caught up. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seventh Ward, Alderman Smith?
Yes, the seventh ward monthly town hall will be held this Saturday at DA's banquet hall from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you have any questions regarding that, please contact 708-891-8197, or email asmith@caymansity.org.
Thank you, Alderman. Under the mayor's report, just to remind everyone that construction has started on, we have trucks out that are doing sewer jetting. Matt, our engineer, will give us a complete update on what's going on, and some of the items we promised residents that we will start taking care in the aftermath of flood. So Matt, you want to give us an update on the sewers and also any other engineering projects that we have going on?
More than happy to, Mayor. Quick update on some of the projects that we got going out there right now in the city. We got the emergency cleaning and jetting project. That one, work is about halfway through, complete right now. We are coordinating that also, too. One of the big items is also with the schools, and then to try and sequence it when it is not during schools in session, so we're trying to target those during the winter break, or sorry, spring break. River Oaks Drive is still slated to start construction in April, as is also to Torrance Avenue. The lead service lines were approximately about 75% complete on the project. Wilson, 157th, those projects, they have been awarded to Gallagher, and the contracts were in execution right now to get those together, so that way that can be started in April. Quick update on a couple other ones. We have the Superior Pond Maintenance RFP. That was a, it was a motion that was made by the council at the last meeting in February, and that one is actually out to bid already as we speak. Bids will be coming in for that on the 27th of March here at City Hall. Forest Hill and Buffalo are on the agenda tonight for, Forest Hill is a sewer replacement, and Buffalo Avenue is a sewer lining project. We also sat down with Public Works and went through some of the maintenance needs. We're looking at trying to get 25 fire hydrants removed and replaced throughout the city, various locations. The drinking water reservoir tanks, we have a couple elevated ones, they're national, the landmarks, the Smiley Towers, and then also a couple at the pump station. We're going to, we also have a motion on to, so we can solicit RFPs in order to get those cleaned. What, by getting those cleaned, what it does is it helps the protective coatings last longer on the tanks. It's a preventative maintenance exercise. Spoke with the Army Corps of Engineers just yesterday about the Army Corps project. The survey field work is about 85% complete. It should be done in about another week or two, and they are still on schedule to try and carry that in April to the property easement acquisition phase. As you're aware, sidewalk program, the sidewalk locations are due today, but if, if by some means we need an extra couple days, we really would need them by Monday at the absolute latest, so we can maintain that schedule. We're already coordinating with Public Works at various locations so that we can get on there and get those repaired. Heads up for everyone here in the city, Nicor Gas will be starting some gas line replacement projects throughout the city in late spring, early summer. And then we just received word, too, that the USEDA Calumet City Industrial Park, we're in the final process here of getting the sign-offs on the permits, so we can move that one to Green alleys, we are at about the 90% design level for four more alleys to be constructed this year. And then the city did receive ARPA dollars to reconstruct the Waterman on Arthur Street that is in the sixth ward. It's from 160th Place to 163rd Street. The construction is fully funded. We have approximately one year to utilize those funds, and we will have, their design proposal will be pushed before, or brought before the council for consideration at the next agenda, so that way we can meet that date and utilize those funds and not have them... have them disappear on us. And that is an update that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Also, in Springfield, there are two bills that passed that important to Kayuma City. First bill passed was by leader Elizabeth Hernandez, was a bill for sewer and also water usage, which means that any insurance company must work with residents who have insurance to ensure that they have sewer backup insurance and also water insurance. The policy has to be disclosed to the municipality, and it also has to be disclosed to the resident. If that policy comes up for renewal, they have to notify the residents of sewer backup and also have to take them through education process. We know during the aftermath of the flooding, that was one of the issues that our residents brought up. They didn't know if they had sewer coverage or water coverage. This is not to force anyone to get sewer backup coverage or water insurance, but it's also a way to ensure that residents are educated on the aftermath of flooding. So, all insurance companies will have to do this, and hopefully that bill will pass. It's on second reading in Springfield. The second bill, it's a number of bills that are affecting possibly our crime-free housing department, not only in Kayuma City, but throughout the state of Illinois. Our director, Mike Bansky, was down in Springfield, meeting with reps. The goal of these bills is to eliminate crime-free housing programs throughout the state. It's based on one issue that happened in the University of Richland Park, Village of Richland Park. So, now the state is considering eliminating crime-free housing departments throughout the state of Illinois. The bill has the potential to pass. It started in the Senate, and then it's also in the House. There are two versions of it, and I know Director Bansky will give us a complete update. It's coming up for a hearing next Thursday. The hearing that they had, was scheduled for this week, got canceled, but Director Bansky and his team went down in Springfield, talking to the reps and the sponsors of the bill, asking them to reconsider this bill. There's also a bill up in Springfield dealing with squatters that will address our situation in Kayuma City. We'll definitely give you an update on that bill as it start moving forward as well. That's all I have. The next item on the agenda is informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Is there a motion to accept items 8A through E and place those on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pa, sorry. Motion passes to place these items on the agenda. I mean, place them on file. Item nine are new action items. You have the items that the engineer mentioned, and you have direction to our city attorney about handicap parking and ordinances. Does anyone have any questions regarding items nine, one through 10? If not, can someone make a motion to approve items, new business items, one through 10?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Patton.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
On the roll call vote of 6-0, the motion passes to approve items nine, one through 10. Item 10 on the agenda are building permits. Bless you, Alderman. Are building permits one, two, one through three? Are there any questions regarding the building permits and fence permits? Do you want to take items 10 and 11 together, Alderman?
Take 11 separate.
Item 10, one through three, is there a motion to approve the building permits, new fence, one through three, as presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second, Williams.
Second, Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Gardner.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
On the roll call vote of 6 voting yes, 0 voting no, motion passes. Item 11, Alderman Tillman. Is there a motion to approve or to table?
Yeah, so I want to give Alderman of the Ward an opportunity to give his opinion on this, and then maybe I'll follow with mine, and we can have discussion.
So, the discussion on the table, Alderman Smith, if you want to approve or table this matter, is the owner is requesting a five-foot fence to extend from the popping line to the sidewalk. Is that your prerogative, Alderman, to approve this, or would you like to?
I'm okay, I'm okay with the variance.
If so, can you make a motion to approve, Alderman?
I move to approve.
Motion made to approve item 11, one on the agenda. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alderman Williams. Roll call, Alderman, would you like discussion?
I actually just would like to say, I kind of looked at the pictures and drove by the property as I kind of looked at this variance. We get a lot of requests for these throughout the city, and I would kind of urge the Alderman to take pause and kind of look at this because if we did pass this, that would sort of set a precedent. And when looking at this, it will be not uniform across the neighborhood. And so, you know, I'm not sure why, the reason for this variance, but my position is that we do not approve it. It looks like it's adjacent to a sidewalk, and it would go to the corner. So, yeah, it would look kind of awkward if that fence ended at the corner.
Alderman, we're in roll call. Did you like to table this, Alderman, or you'd like to proceed?
I proceed.
We're in roll call, Alderman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on item 11, one?
Williams.
Yes.
Tillman.
No.
Navarrete.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Patton.
No.
Gardner.
No.
That's four noes.
On the roll call vote of 2 voting yes, 4 voting no, this matter is denied for the agenda for approving the fence farings. Item 12 on the agenda, resolution and ordinances, one, one through three. Alderman Tillman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda, agenda items one and two under new business, item 12.
There are motion made by Alderman Tillman to approve items one and two. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on items one and two?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton. Smith.
Yes.
Item three, Alderman Tillman.
I'd like to make a motion to table item three to the next council meeting agenda.
Motion made to table item three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Navarrete. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three is being tabled to the next City Council meeting. Item 13 under new business item is financial matters. Alderman Navarrete has requested that item 27 and 28 be tabled until the next council meeting.
Is it? Can we table it next, or defer it to the committee and table it in the same, in one motion or no? Yeah, so this way we make sure it's on the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to make that motion, Alderman?
Yeah, make a motion to defer action on financial items 27 and 28 to the next City Council meeting.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Patton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Items 28 and 27 are deferred to the next council meeting. Alderman Gardner, items one through 26. Are there any questions about items one through 26? You want to, or 29 through 45? Alderman, can you please make the motion?
I'm sorry, I had a, on item 29, was there a reason why there was no insurance for this accident? And then there was also an accident in the bill list, a repair for an accident in the bill list, and then there was also this one here for an accident. Did we not, did insurance not pick up this reason why insurance isn't picking up the costs for these?
I believe there's a $15,000 deductible, Alderman. We'll get you that information.
Question about 39?
Yes, Alderman.
Can we get an opinion from the attorneys? I know Attorney Carrie Lynn came and spoke to us a while back about the past practice of these grants and the way to go about doing it. And we're, sorry.
Attorney Carrie Lynn came and spoke to us a few months back about the past practice and the way that we've done these, these grants in the past, and I think there were some suggestions about how to go forward and make sure we're doing them in a appropriate manner. So, I would ask that we defer action on number 39 until we can get an opinion from the attorneys regarding that one.
Motion made by Alderman Patton to defer action on item 39. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
So, Alderman Gardner, for the record, motion will be to approve items one through 26, 30 through 38, and then 40 through 45.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner to?
Can you repeat the numbers again?
The numbers to approve was items one through 26, 30 through 38.
Forty through 45.
And 40 through 45. Is there a second to the motion?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
For everyone, we do have a brief executive session. At 7:09 p.m., we will come back and conduct business. For the record, we have, just like to announce our Police and Fire Commission. We have Butch Carradine here. We also have in the audience our commissioners, our deputy commissioners, Scott Nima, Josh, and I think, I thought I saw Zach Quackenbush in the back, our director of Community Economic Development. We have Don Alessi. We have Val Williams, a city administrator, Deanna Jeffrey. We have Mike Bansky. We also have Director Tillman from our Building and Zoning, and also our fire chief, Glenn Barker, police chief, Kevin Kolash. And then also in the back, we have our chaplain, Pastor Flucker. We passed the resolution for the passing of Stevon Grant, the president of the Fire Commitment, Police and Fire. His services are this Sunday. His family has been incredibly encouraged by him going through probably like a year and a half worth of treatments from pancreatic cancer. And we just want to say our thoughts and prayers to his family, and our thoughts and prayers to his legacy that he's leaving in Kayuma City. So, if we can have a moment of silence for Stevon Grant, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to go into executive session at 7:11 p.m. for the purposes of pending litigation, unemployment of specific individual, and anything else, Attorney Stillman?
Nothing.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Patton. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in the executive session at 7:11 p.m. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 7:46 p.m.?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Navarrete. We are back in the regular order of business at 7:47 p.m. We are under unfinished business. Alderman Navarrete under unfinished business.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to mention in my Public Works report, I just wanted, for the record, if we can set up a meeting, March marked one year since I've had last approved a rec in the Public Works, as Public Works Committee Chair. So, if we could set up a meeting with Purchasing and IT to follow up and see if we could resolve this matter, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Make sure that happens.
And then, I'm sorry, Mayor, last meeting I had mentioned it, the resolution for the TF North Football Team, if we can get that?
Yes, that will be at the next meeting. So, for the council, TF North is, they're having a dinner tomorrow night at 6:00, 6:00 p.m. The resolution will be on the next agenda, so they will come before the City Council on behalf of the City Council, Alderman Navarrete, Alderman Patton. We are working with two businessmen to purchase shoes for the entire team, which will, they will go to Foot Locker, so we'll announce the date. But tomorrow night is the dinner at Schrum School, I believe, tomorrow at 6 o'clock? It was on the agenda tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I know, yeah, we're talking about two different things. I'm sorry. Yeah, congratulations to the Schrum team, but?
Schrum team.
Yeah, the, we had drafted, we had made a motion to have our attorneys draft a resolution for, to honor the TF North Football Team and their accomplishments. Now, it's been some time, basketball season is now over. I'm just wondering where, whatever happened with the resolution so we can get that to them, but?
We'll check, Alderman.
Yeah, I'll forward you the agenda for the motion and resend the email, yeah.
And Attorney Stillman will just have it prepared for the March 28th agenda.
I'll forward that again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Alderman?
No, you ruined the surprise on the shoes, though. Did the kids know about it?
I know, right.
You should have said that.
Just, it's a good surprise, though.
All right, take it back. All right, that's all I had.
You're winding the tape on that head. Alderman Gardner, unfinished business? Alderman Patton, unfinished business?
Yes, Alderman Navarrete is jealousy about the trophies that we bring home on the south side of town aside. The mayor is correct. Tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., there will be a celebration for the 7th and 8th grade boys' basketball teams at Schrum School. 7th graders won the state championship, 8th graders came in third place. So, I look forward to going in there tomorrow and celebrating their accomplishments with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Just want to remind the residents about the Seventh Ward Monthly Town Hall meeting, which will be held at DA's this Saturday, March the 16th. It's held every third Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and also want to congratulate the 7th grade team at Hoover Schrum for winning the state championship, along with the 8th grade team for coming in third place. I will be at the dinner tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business?
I believe Bansky had something he wanted to bring to the council's attention. I'm sorry about that.
You're getting nervous. Earlier tonight, the mayor mentioned that we were down in Springfield, and there's something that I just want the City Council to know as well as the citizens. Mayor Jones, as state representative, works his butt off for our area. I just so happen to be allowed to partake in a dinner on Tuesday and a luncheon on Wednesday in which the insurance committee members and insurance people honored Representative Jones for the work that he has put in to passing some great legislation and helping the state's insurance. They presented him with an award that none of us would have ever known about, none of us would probably have never seen yet. I was given the pleasure in being able to see that. I was given the pleasure in being able to see that, and so I just wanted to make it a point tonight, as we've honored so many other people for the things that they've accomplished, fire department, police department, the kids. Just wanted to honor you, Representative Thaddeus Jones, for the work that you were cited for in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Bansky. Appreciate that. We have a lot of work to do in Springfield. You know, we have those good relationships. We want to stop them from passing this bad bill that's going to affect Cayman City and many other communities, just based on one, one incident that got misunderstood in Springfield. And hopefully, they, they listen to you, and they listen to me, they listen to everyone we brought down there, will not touch crime-free housing. So, thank you for advocating and getting in their face, as well as only the team could do, but I appreciate that. There being no further business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:52 p.m.?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Patton to adjourn the meeting at 7:52 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
A meeting is adjourned at 7:52 p.m. Thank you, everyone.